Good evening. Being six o'clock on Monday, April 22nd, I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Mr. Dowling, if you'd like to join us at the podium. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded, just so everyone knows. And before us this evening, we have Cormac Dowling, the owner of The James Pub. We're excited for it to open. Do you have an opening date?
I think a week from Friday. We'll do a soft opening and then open Monday.
Excellent.
So this day, two weeks.
Very exciting. So we have the first application before us this evening. I'm going out of order of the agenda. It's going to be the annual weekday entertainment license. Be more hospitality and doing business as The James Pub. Cormac Dowling, 55 Main Street, within the confines of the restaurant for live or recorded music. So they've come before us this evening looking for an annual weekday entertainment license for live or recorded music that would be sought until the end of the year. It would expire December 31st, 2024, and it's within the confines of the inside of the building, so windows and doors closed, as we've done with other restaurants. Are there any questions?
Now, that does not include Saturday, correct?
It does.
It does.
Weekday in the entertainment license field means Monday through Saturday.
Yep.
Cormac, the name is going to be The James or The James North?
The James. The James. And I think we're putting Essex in just to differentiate between the need them.
Okay.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the annual weekday entertainment license.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next on our agenda is going to be, we have an outdoor entertainment license. This is a, an event that's held annually. It's the Shave to Save that was previously hosted at the former owners, The Village Restaurant, something that we've traditionally approved. They're looking for this to be granted for Monday, May 20th, 2024, between the hours of 4:00 PM and 8:00 PM. This would be actually outside on the patio with two guitars, one microphone, one electric piano, live ensemble, small personal amplifier, weather permitting. Is there any questions?
No.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have two Sunday applications before us. The first one is for May 5th, 2024, between the hours of 1:00 and 8:00 PM. The second one is for May 12th, 2024, between the hours of 12:00 and 8:00 PM. These both read, two guitars, one microphone, one electric piano, small personal amplifier inside the restaurant. So these are both indoors. Any questions? Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve said licenses.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You are all set.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Is there a time limit on the music or is it just open?
It's the hours of operation.
Okay. Great. All right. Thanks.
Are you going to move into executive session or?
You're all set. Thank you. Do you want to do that now?
Yeah.
We can do that.
So I'm going to recommend that the board move into executive session to discuss an employment contract with the potential Newtown accountant, Michaela Nolan, and with respect to union Afsmi contract negotiations, that the chairman declared that an open discussion of the union topic would be detrimental to the town's negotiating position and that the chairman also declare that the board will be returning to open session to resume regular business.
So I will entertain a motion to move into executive session by roll call vote.
Peter Flippin, aye.
Inga Harrow, aye.
Ruth Prehn, aye. You can fade to black. Yep. Thank you, everybody online, for patiently waiting while we return from executive session. We're going to go into the town administrator's report next.
First item on my report is just an update on the decorative lighting project. Very fortunately for the town, the Department of Transportation, which had extended the town a grant in the amount of $160,000 for a portion of the lighting project, has indicated that it will allow us to expend the full amount of the grant against project costs to date. So that is going to defray most of the cost of the decorative, custom decorative lighting, which is good news indeed. I am presently working with town council to review the request from our lighting installation contractor, because remember, they did do some work between commencement of the project and when we found the utility conflicts. And so we're looking over what their, what their estimate is, and we disagree, so we're working on that. With respect to our engineering company, it's the town's position that the engineering company did not provide adequate guidance to the town before the town went and ordered these custom fixtures. If there was going to be that much of a chance of conflicts, then a recommendation should have come for further exploration of the area, whether that's ground penetrating radar or actual test digging prior to ordering those non-returnable fixtures. So the town has put the engineering firm on notice, and we know that their insurer has also been notified. We're waiting for all the numbers to settle, and then we will continue down that path.
Stan Tech dispute that or they just don't?
They have not responded yet. So, you know, these types of things, this type of dispute tends to go on for a long time, and we'll just stay with it.
Yeah.
But it was good news that the majority of the cost is going to be defrayed by the DOT grant. The town will store these fixtures, and it's possible that it could be used in some other place in the community in the future.
Do they care how and when we use them, DOT?
Nope. They just, you know, they're willing to pay so long as the town.
Eventually uses them.
Right. And I even told them, I'm like, until the town begins to discuss that, as far as the town meeting is concerned, that's not even going to happen until November, and they understood that.
Yeah.
But, you know, it was, we'll defray the cost with the understanding that you will store them and potentially use them somewhere else. The next item has to do with the camera system for the Centennial Grove. The town is doing a fair amount of improvement work at the Centennial Grove. The replacement pavilion is coming along very well, and the town will soon start in concert with some volunteers, professional tradespeople who are volunteering their time working on a restroom facility. One of the things that was also part of the package was to make sure that we have adequate monitoring capabilities down there. So at the Fall Town Meeting, there was an approval to extend the town's fiber optic network into the Grove, one at the Grove Cottage, one point of presence there, and one at the concession stand. That's been done. I'm working through final testing right now with our technician on actually having switches in those locations that will, that each of the cameras will connect to. So that's, that's going to be done. So now it comes to purchasing the actual cameras. We did get an estimate from one company that was around $18,000. I am looking at other vendors as well as we speak. With respect to where that video actually goes, we have a, what's called an MVR, mobile video recorder, in the police station right now. That takes and records the video within the station and around the station. Even if we weren't doing the Grove project, they're not very happy with that system. The software that came with it is overly complicated and is fraught with requests for updates, which sometimes take the camera system offline or the ability to record offline. So they're looking to improve that system anyway. What we don't want to do is bring new cameras that are going to be installed at the Grove and send them into a system that wasn't working well even for the original intended purpose. So we had talked about additional funding to either strip out the software on the existing two servers that we have and bring in new software and have, have the cameras from the Grove and the station go to that, or actually replace the servers, because soon enough they're going to be going end of life. They went in in 2021. Next year is already 2025, so.
What's their end of life, though? That five years doesn't seem like a long time.
Five to seven years. So it depends on, like, in the private sector, five years would probably be it. And here, we'll probably end up with them for longer. Now, the, the cost proposal there for the upgrade of the server, if you want, if you were going to just go with stripping out the existing server, of course, it's a pair of servers, that cost.
Forty-eight?
No, that's, it's $14,260. Okay?
That's for new software.
Just the software.
Yep. You strip out the pair of servers you have now, and you bring in a different platform.
Yeah.
Now, what's curious about that is they won't be able to save most of the existing video, but they would be able to save anything that was a priority to the police department, because the software that it's coming from doesn't talk well to the software that it's going to. If you were going to actually change out the, the servers according to this vendor, okay, that's about $47,000. So a big difference in price. You have to decide whether, you know, you want to start slow and at least get it so that you've got both the Grove and the station all on one platform that's simpler for the police to use. That would be a big step ahead, anyway. Again, I'm having this priced by others just to make sure that we're in the right ballpark, because when we read a number at town meeting, we want to make sure we've had several, at least, estimates, right? We're still going to have to go out for quotes on this.
Couple of things. As far as, it would be the 18-4 and the 47-1 if we did new server, new software?
Yep. That's correct.
Thanks.
And it would be three, about $3,000 for our high-level tech to actually make everything happen and do the routing that delivers the video from the Grove across our fiber network to the people that are going to record it on the server on the other end.
How much of that is because of the additional video to the Grove? I mean, is that pretty miniscule, just having to store more?
It's a storage thing, and so that, when they strip out the software, they'd have to partition the disk differently and hopefully use maybe an area that's not already being used. But more video means the server is going to fill more quickly, and then you have to have a standard that says, well, how often are we going to overwrite it?
Yeah.
And I know the chief's here. I think, chief, for cer, if you want to go up, up there, I just have a question. When it comes to what you save, do you sometimes, if you have an incident, have to take that and put it on a separate drive somewhere so that it's always available?
Yeah, or we'll save it to, excuse me, we'll save it to a flash drive.
Okay.
Because a lot of times we have to, not so much with the station, but every once in a while, if there's something that goes on, then we may have to send to the court for discovery.
Okay. But for the majority of the time, that's not really happening. Those get overwritten? Is that how it works?
I believe so.
You pull, you pull the stuff out that you know might end up in court because something actually happened, whereas other stuff doesn't get pulled out, and eventually we'll go over it.
How long is it?
It's 180 days, I believe.
Is that, oh, wow. That's quite a bit.
That's my recollection.
I believe it is, and you can, you can see, like, if something's recording, you'll see the red light come on in the different areas of the, of the monitor. If it's not recording, then it's just, I believe, it just gets overwritten at some point, yeah.
Yeah, I believe when we signed the original contract, when we did body worn cameras and we started talking about the server, I believe everything is overwritten every 180 days.
Yeah.
And then same thing applies, which is that everything goes on, like, court cases go onto a flash drive.
Somebody notices.
Exactly.
Right. Chief, do you have a preference for which of the two options for the server should be considered? I mean, one's a lot more money than the other, obviously.
I mean, obviously, as you know, that, that's really not my forte, but I don't really have a preference. My concern is that very often, we will come in in the morning, and the monitors, we have nothing up there, and it's getting very expensive to keep calling out.
Right. And see, moving to the new platform will stop that, because the problem is this complicated platform that came with it, that was called for, I guess, in the design. Like I said, many updates arrive that, that have to actually be manually input, and the system goes down in the meantime. It's, it's meant for something where there's somebody in a control room, and it's like all they do, right? And they're actually watching video. That's not what we have here, and it's never going to be what we have. And so I would say that even if you went with the lower-cost option, you're going to get that improvement, okay?
It'll improve it.
Yes.
No doubt.
Because the platform is going to be a completely different platform, and it's, my understanding from talking to at least this company, is that it doesn't have that issue. It, it does get updated, but it's in a much more controlled way, and you don't have these downtimes because of the system waiting to update.
Right.
I guess I'd like to get more information, because.
It's three times as much.
You know that I'm, you know, very budget conscious, but I'm also, I lean toward the more expensive approach in the sense that if we're going to upgrade it, I'm not going to spend money twice. I want to spend it once and know that we're going to be in a good place long term, but equally, this is one company. I'd like to hear what somebody else has to say before I make any decision.
And then the one comment I would ask is whether or not other vendors that come in within, it has any AI capability, meaning even if it could write a report that says, you know, last 30 days, no, no camera action or something. There's so much coming in with AI, I just, it would be great to be proactive about it.
Yeah. One company that I'm looking at is, it's called Okers, and they're a big audiovisual company, and they're on the state contract, and I'm going to have them look at it as well.
Are you all set with me, Brendan?
Yeah, I think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I can tell you that funding-wise, we have about $63,000 in the Town Technology Fund. Now, remember, that has to be spent on this type of thing. We can't use that money for anything else. That's not enough money, though, if we, if we went with the more expensive option, but the building fund still has about $36,000 left in it, which was called the Furnishings Fixtures and Equipment Fund.
Right.
So between the two, or, or we could also look to defray the cost through the Maya Grant. Every year, we have the ability to go for about $10,000, and that would help. So we do have a way to fund even the more expensive version. I'm hoping to get some feedback from Okers and maybe, you know, it, it doesn't matter. Town meeting doesn't need to know who you're going with, but I need to know what, whether the upper limit that we're talking about here is reasonable or is it way too high? And if I get that, that companion quote, I think we'll be able to bracket it in and go to town meeting to get, you're going to pick which option you want, basically.
If we spend any more money, is there any longer end of life?
Yes, because you're going to get more storage on the server pair that you're going to get.
Yeah.
That's the replacement pair.
Yeah.
You will also be able to repurpose the pair that we already have, which means maybe you could kick archive video to it.
Right.
Because it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't cease to function, it's just not what you would call primary equipment, because it might be more susceptible to malfunction.
Right.
Okay? So you're getting more storage, you're getting backup storage from the existing pair, and you're getting a newer machine, which means now you've kicked your end of life out five or seven years from.
Right.
Now.
Whenever it's installed.
So there are large advantages to it. We just have to make sure that we're looking at a good price.
I want apples and apples before I.
Yeah.
Okay. So collect more information.
Yep. And, you know, the next time you meet is town meeting, but I'll be, I'll be letting everyone know what the recommendation is.
But even if you, even, I mean, I do think we should go for the higher option, but we're only off by a few thousand.
As far as having the funds?
If this was, if, excuse me, yes, as far as having the funds, if we've got $63,000, you said?
Yeah.
And this comes out to under 66?
Yeah, it's not. It's not a big difference. And then that tech fund, every quarter, we get about four to 4,500 bucks, is it, the town tech fund? And so that will, that will continue, you know, that will start to rejuvenate, okay? The next item is the shellfish truck. So I did get connected through Senator Tar's office with the state surplus program, and the coordinator for that program said that the state is no longer allowing municipalities to have state surplus vehicles at no cost. Now, in 2018, when we got the existing truck from the state surplus program, they did do it at no cost, okay? So now you have a vehicle that needs, I would say, $4,400 worth of repairs, $34 for the emissions work, and say, $1,000 for welding, okay, because of the rotten support that's underneath it. And that sounds like a lot of money, but I don't know yet what the cost of even the surplus truck is going to be, because he is looking, he said he's going out this week, and he's going to look in their yard to see what he has available for pickup trucks that are four by four and have the ability, already have a tow hook. Okay, that's our requirement.
Does it have to be a pickup truck? Could it be like a, you know, a?
SUV.
Yeah, some sort of a large SUV.
He likes to have the pickup truck because he can throw the scale in the back, he can throw.
It's all open.
Confiscated clams.
Confiscated clams.
You throw them in the back of the truck.
Yeah.
Which I think is going to be less money, anyway. I mean, it has to be a four by four.
Yeah.
So a four by four pickup, I think is going to be less than a full SUV. I don't know if the board has a preference at this point in time. He can drive it for about 60 more days, because it didn't fail on safety, it failed on emissions.
Well, he's looking, so we'll see what he comes up with.
That's right. And so I, you know, I could get you an update at the next meeting. Now, one of the things on your agenda is to transfer money from his vehicle maintenance line. You could still set that up, and if you don't use it, it will just fall back to free cash. I think that way, you're ready to go if you have to.
Right.
Now, that's later in the agenda, I believe, but something to think about.
So when he goes to this, to the surplus garage, barn, whatever it is?
Coordinator's going, not, not the shellfish.
Okay, all right.
He's going to get back to us with what he thinks the options are.
Okay.
It's a big lot out somewhere.
All right. So he'd, he'd provide you with his, his two vehicles, his, the prices on it, his, the ages, his, okay.
And I'll get the pricing, and we're still within our 60 days to keep driving the current All right, Centennial Grove Improvement Project. You know, work is resuming on the pavilion after the winter hiatus, and it's now time to start looking at different options for the rest of the Grove as we start to pull things together. Now, the one thing we did is we looked, Mr. Mayor and I, because he's the volunteer coordinator for the professional effort that's happening. We have to really make sure that we understand the ADA rules, because the whole slope around that pavilion, where it connects back out to where the restrooms will be, has to all be within ADA slope, all the way up from the street. And the building inspector is working on giving us some guidance on that. Now, with respect to what Mr. Mayor would like to do next, there are mature trees that are outside of the wetland buffer zone that would be, he thinks advantageous to clear out of the, the edge of the lower parking lot. So that's the parking lot where the ball field is. And if you just came in down that road and you bared left into the parking lot, you'd be looking at woods in front of you. It's along that periphery where he thinks he should take out some more trees, fully grown trees. And he would like to actually use.
Why, to enlarge the?
Yeah, to make it squared off and to make the parking better.
Yeah.
And then he actually wants to take that, those trees, I don't know what's going on with that speaker.
And mill them.
And mill those and bring the lumber back in, into the project for the restrooms.
That's mostly pine, isn't it?
It is all pine, and that's what he did with the.
That's what he wants.
Pavilion, yes.
Yeah.
So that's one thing.
So would that have to be voted on in order for?
Well, since you control the area, yes. I told him, until the board hears about it and says, okay. And remember, we're outside the wetlands buffer here, so this isn't something where you need further permission, okay? They're just trees that can be cut. And with respect to the trees, he made another suggestion. He's also been contracted by Scott Energy. Remember, Scott Energy mistakenly cut some town trees adjacent to the Scott property out on Southern Avenue. Mr. Mayor is saying, look, those, that area of the woods is going to come back on its own. It'll go through primary succession, secondary succession, and you'll have trees someday. He's saying that if someone's going to pay to have trees, it would be great if they got, got planted down at the Grove in areas that would complement what they're doing down there. And Adam Scott said that he would oblige that request, and so it's up to the board whether you want to continue to have Adam Scott do the replanting in the area of cut forests that no one really ever sees, or do you want him to put an equal amount of resources into putting trees up at the Grove as the Grove gets improved.
Yeah, I'd like to see two things. Have the trees that he wants to cut marked, so we could see which ones they were.
Mm-hmm.
And also maybe, I don't know, spray paint an X or something wherever he wants to plant. How many trees was he going to put in? 20 or something like that? Scott Energy.
I think it was more than that, but they were small.
Yeah.
I think instead, he'll, he'll spend an equal amount of money, but put more mature trees in areas that.
Yeah.
So he, he doesn't really.
Oh, okay, more mature, but fewer.
Right, but fewer.
Yeah.
But at least the public gets a benefit from the tree that's coming up in the park as opposed to something that's going to happen, anyway.
Yeah, it's just that, you know, that's used a lot by kids playing ball and stuff like that, and so you want to make.
Right, and he wouldn't, he wouldn't do it without giving us the, he'll give us a plan on that, okay?
That's fine.
But conceptually, he's looking at whether he should be, he and Mr. Scott are looking to see whether they should be doing the, the planting. And if you're not all about that, we can at least say, don't do that.
That's good.
Give us your plan for the new area, you know?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
He also, Brendan's not bringing this up, but Dan has a kind of a parking plan as well, the parking lot. He would like to put in some sort of a natural division and create three rows of parking instead of just kind of how it is two. People park like along the woods now and then kind of in the middle. He'd like to put a row in the middle of whether it's rocks or trees or something and create actual parking.
Oh, okay.
So he's looking at increasing the parking over time. He's, this is more like a stepwise approach that he's doing, so that it's not so shocking all at one time.
So he's talking about cutting trees on the ball field side of the parking lot, not the other, because people.
No, on the back.
No.
On the right side?
No, so you're, you're coming in, you're coming, the parking lot's here, ball field's here, you're coming in on Centennial Grove Road.
Yep.
And there's trees right here, like, you could pull up to curb stops here.
On the left, you take a left.
Take a left, and you come in straight.
Okay, because people park over on this side, too, before you.
No, because that's the water.
That's all the watershed protection. We can't do anything over there.
So this would be between the wetlands.
Yeah, over on the woodsy side.
Right, there'd be, at the end of the wetlands buffer zone, but on this side, the woodsy.
Yeah.
And then, let's see.
I'd like to see it, like Peter was saying, either tree markings or a drawing that shows where to look.
Yep, he'll do that.
So that we can make sure.
Yeah, just go visit.
Be aware, I shouldn't say make sure, be more of aware of what they're looking at doing.
And then the, the other idea he had was, and we can do a plan on it as well, if you go to the upper parking lot that's adjacent to the concession stand, okay? You come around up the hill, and you would make a left and go head in, and you're on the knoll that's overlooking the beach, okay? That parking lot primarily right now is meant for one row of cars, because if you park in the middle, it, people get confused. Now, it can be done, but it's not very often done. His idea, and it's up to you whether you share this, is to bring the rocks that currently stopped those cars from going on the lawn way back towards the road, so that you just the road, so that you just have one row of parking and that parking lot becomes green space, okay? Because then, the picnic grove and the park area becomes bigger. And, yeah, there's not as much parking up top, but the parking lot down the bottom, especially if you cut the trees, is gonna be made, and there will be still appropriate handicap parking at the top.
The issue I have with that is, I know that the Y, as part of their setup, uses that as a circle for pickup and drop off. So, they come around, you know, they put cones up and they drive and they come around, and there's plenty of room with cars parked up against the rocks for cars to come in and surround.
Just still go around like that, I see. A traffic flow thing.
Yeah, and, you know, I think that works pretty well for them, but, I mean, it could change, you know? I mean, they could just have the parents park below and come up and get them. Because you don't want parents parking up there to pick up their kids, because they're, well, number one, there might not be spots if there are people at the beach or, and you don't want them, you know, taking up all the spaces for that three to five-hour period, you know, whatever it is when their kids are being picked up, so that's something to be...
It's a good point to think about what, if we made these changes, what would they do? And, and I think anything can happen, it just has to be communicated.
Well, how about this? The first thing he wants to do is go after the trees, and he's willing to do it for free. Why don't we say, "Dan, can you mark the trees?" If everybody agrees after you do a site visit, then let him do it, because I think he's ready to do it soon.
Yeah.
Or, or give us a time and a date where we can show up and he can say, "These, not those that," you know? Either way, I'm fine.
Yeah, and also a, a, um, plan for, what was it, for...
On the new trees.
Planting plan.
Yep.
You know, and he can do one first if he's ready to come.
And then, on, you know, on the middle row parking and the smaller parking lot above, that can be later.
Yeah.
He just wants to keep working, and so I think if you say, "Okay, go do the trees", he has something to do and he keeps, keeps the project moving.
Yep.
Yeah, and I, the only other thing that I would say is, if we made that parking lot further from the vista of the water, again, do we need to have ADA compliant? There's, there's no way to get down to that water now, if you're handicapped.
There would never be, because the slope is too extreme.
You could use the park, you know, people can use the park though and the pavilion and all that.
Right, yeah, as far as, as far as getting down there, you would have to have a ramp that started back by the pavilion or something and switch back.
Back and forth, yeah.
Switch back. And you'd eat up a lot of the landscape and... Okay, so...
So, I will...
What do you think?
I think what I'm gonna do is entertain a motion to, just on the tree cutting contingent on us doing a site visit, 'cause I think we can do that fast enough. I think Dan will go out there and mark them tomorrow morning, and we could probably meet the next morning or so. I think we can do this really fast.
Okay.
So, I will entertain a motion to approve the request to do some tree cutting at Centennial Grove, once the trees have been marked and the Board of Selectmen has a site visit. And then, we'll all respond via email to the Town Administrator. He'll collect the votes, we'll have it in writing. But I'll entertain the motion to approve moving forward with the tree cutting after our approval.
So, moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Brendan, so from what I'm hearing, we want some more information on if you can get a plan for tree planting. It doesn't, it sounds like the board's generally in favor of taking the trees from the Scott property down, or municipal, okay? And then, if we can actually send a email to Chris and see if this would impact them, the, the, the traffic flow.
Okay, I will.
Okay. So, we're gonna pause there, and we're gonna move into the Department Head meeting. So, thank you, Department Head members, for joining us this evening. So, generally, in, many, many months ago, it might've even been a year ago now, we talked about the coordination of the Department Quarterly Meeting, in that we were gonna try for a new format of how to get us information, what we were looking for. And I'm not sure that that format necessarily got adopted or is, is working in that way. So, I think what the board's looking for is not just an update of what's happened in the last three months, but more of things of interest from various boards and committees, things that, obstacles, recommendations, how to coordinate town business, how each board and committee needs to work together, what we're looking toward in the future, and how this board can support the town departments. So, having said that, I realize that this is just an announcement, and that's not what we're here to do this evening. But as we look forward, the updates are great, we get to know what everyone's been up to, but it kinda happened in the past in the Revue Mirror. I wanna see what we're looking at kind of going forward. So, Jody, I'm gonna invite you to the podium to start, because I know that we have all of the Department Heads with us this evening and from the Finance Committee perspective.
That's what we wrote, wrote to them.
Okay. I know that you have an announcement, so I'm gonna let you take the lead, so that we make sure everyone's joined us at this point.
Okay. Finance Committee. With the budget in the book, prepared for annual town meeting, we are previewing the new look of the budget for FY '26, as we're going to present it in the annual, in the Finance Committee book, which will be two line items for wages and expenses. Again, we're trying to simplify some of the back office process, line item transfers minutia, basically, that most towns actually don't vote their annual budget in that way anymore. They simply vote for the two line items. So, we are previewing that in our Finance Committee book, formerly the pink book, now the green book. And the public will still have the ability to see all of the line item accounting in detail. It will have a link to the town website, and you'll see the same budget that you would have seen in the budget book. This will help Department Heads to better manage their budget. They won't have to worry as much about the line items being under or over budget and coming to the Finance Committee to ask permission for line item transfers. It will give them more hands-on capability for their budgets. But the Finance Committee, it'll help greatly, because it'll allow better budgeting going forward, where we can actually see the, the hits and misses and of their budget. We want to see where you're overspent, so that that's a discussion point for the next budget season. So, this will provide more clarity, and I think we can get an earlier jump on the budget planning. We try every year, I think, to start in December, get numbers in January. I wanna try and move that process up a little bit, so that we are sort of ahead of the curve and are, are looking at our final numbers much earlier than we did this year. Let's see. We'll also begin, the Finance Committee is going to be more project-oriented going forward, where we will have liaisons for every department. And instead of visiting once a year, we're going to go in quarterly, and we're going to be starting that hopefully in May, right after town meeting, where we sit down with Department Managers, we look at their budgets with them, we discuss where their issues are, find out, you know, what's coming up in the next couple of months, so that there aren't any surprises and they have some support, instead of the Finance Committee swooping in once a year, having a meet and greet for an hour or three, and discussing what's been going on. I think that we need to be more connected, and I think that we need to work together. Chairman Perrin just asked us for something in the future, but these things go through my head all the time. And I honestly believe that these Department Head reports quarterly aren't all that helpful. I think we need to work together in person with Department Heads and Chairs of Committees, whether it's twice a year, once a year, three times a year. We need to sit in a room, we need to talk about what we're doing, what's coming up, who it will affect, and have roundtable discussions about how we're going to get from here to there, so that there aren't any surprises. I've been talking about it for a couple of years. I think about it a lot, and I think that if we can change that format, and maybe it's a, you know, a Friday morning, once or twice a year, and we kind of give it a go and see what happens, I think that we're going to have, I think, more interaction between departments, and we can help to streamline projects that are, that are going on. I mean, you know, clearly, the lighting project, you know, has been discussed ad nauseam, but having people in the room at the same time on a regular basis, I think, provides for better communication and a better means to move forward. So, from the Finance Committee perspective, I think it would be extremely helpful.
So, Jody, I just wanna clarify that. You're saying, as far as these quarterly Committee Head meetings, you, you think are useless?
I do. I don't, I think that we come up here and we either pat ourselves in the back, or it's a, it's a three to five-minute, you know, prepared, this is what we've done, this is what, you know, even what we're going to do. But we're talking to you and not to each other. I think we need to talk to each other with you in order to get a better grasp of what everybody's doing, instead of trying to figure it, figure that out on our own.
I figure, I think that what Ruth is suggesting is a good start, though, to getting there. I mean, first, just boil it down to what's important, what are the issues you're wrestling with, what are your successes and that sort of stuff. So, the others can hear that, and maybe that starts a conversation amongst this board and that board, or, you know, I don't know if you're gonna get them all together.
And, and I think that that's what my concern is, is that I do think that these meetings are good. And I have to tell you, when I was on the school committee, I hated them, 'cause I was like, so I think the role is, we have to figure out, what is the directive we give, and not give it at the meeting at, at eight o'clock, but give it to, you know, give it a month in advance to say, "Quarterly meeting is this date, here's what we're looking for."
I just think that there needs to be more discussion amongst the boards. Here, we're talking at you, and we're not really discussing anything. We're simply delivering information. And I think that, I don't expect that everybody would always be able to be there, but I think that we, we need to take a step forward in having conversations amongst each other, whether it's topic-based or project-based or whatever it is. I, I think it's, you do it in, in the corporate world, you do it in management training, you, and it's successful. So, I think we're small enough that I think we could, you know, give it a try. And I, I do think the change is a good step, but I think there needs to be more interaction. EDC, again, I think Brendan's covered it. The Pavilion Project is moving forward with a team led by Dan Mayer and his professionals, who are helping with the building project or leading the building project. And the restroom project, I think we'll anticipate renting the pavilion next year. So, we're not quite there yet. I think Dan has hopes that maybe we're far enough along in the fall that we could do something as a town, you know, some type of a town event to kick off the Pavilion season. But I think the true rental, we won't be looking for until next, next season. We continue with the downtown beautification project, and that'll be discussed at our meeting on Wednesday. And we will be reviewing our brainstorming list that we came up with last fall to look for new revenue opportunities. And as far as the lights are concerned, I'm sort of hopeful that we could prob, we could most definitely use the lights at the Grove. The lighting piece of the Grove is still something that's missing, and I think they, they would fit in nicely. We need to light from the bottom parking lot, you know, up the hill to the pavilion, if we're looking at a good revenue stream for, for rental income around the restrooms and at the top where the parking is for handicap parking, I, you know, never mind the cottage down the road. But I think that there's a great need for lighting up there, and it would be a, a better project with beautiful lights as opposed to, you know, spotlights hanging from trees.
And no spots, you don't think that there's any spots in the downtown area that we could still use, I don't know, two, three, four lights?
Well, Brendan and, Brendan and I were out there when they were vacuuming the holes. And the problem is that, I think there were two in front of the Village Restaurant that were clean and could go in. But, once you get past that, the utilities were on the front side of the sidewalk, you could've put them on the backside. And then, the next piece, the utilities moved, and they were on the backside of the sidewalk. It, so your, you know, your lights are, would go back and forth. And they're designed to go in a, in a line with a fifty-foot spread of light to go from light to light.
Plus, the back, the backside, you run into right-of-way issue, right? Now, 'cause now you're on private property.
So, the sidewalk ends at the property.
It's, it's close, it depends on where you are, okay?
And I'm not saying all of them, I'm just saying a couple, even from the Village to the Town Hall, maybe three, that we can say that we did use them in the downtown.
Well, we have, we have the two in front of the Village that were clean holes, correct, Brendan?
That's right.
Those were the only two. Then, we came to the next two, and they hit dual gas lines.
And then, they went down the road and they skipped a few and, and went further down, and there were still conflicts, and we had to say...
Right. The utilities went around the bridge.
Yeah, you were gonna start spending on a crew every day for no return, so we stopped it. There was, there were a total of three field days on this project. Some original work to cut the, the concrete with a saw, and then, that was two days, and then some work to actually start vacuuming the holes, and that's where you actually saw the issue. I have one other question on that project right now. We have the EDC Chair here and the, and the, the board. We have those square cutouts for where the light bases were going to go. Those need to be repaired. One option would be to get a quote from a company to take out the entire concrete flag, and when you repour it, embed the ship's plaque in that flag. Another option is that we could hire a local mason to simply patch those, and that would be, that would be just over eight thousand dollars. If we go the other way, it's in the tens of thousands, because you're gonna need police details, prevailing wage, as well as it's, it's more, more work, because you're taking out the entire flag. And I'm not sure what the board's pleasure is on this, but the summer season is coming, and we can't leave the cuts in the sidewalk. We need to return the sidewalk to its full walking surface.
Well, we have the, what, twenty-three plaques, and we wanna use them somewhere. Is there a Plan B if we don't put them in the sidewalk? I mean, it's kinda nice to walk the sidewalk and see, you know, a plaque every fifty or seventy-five feet, whatever it is. But if there's a better use of them, then we should consider that and just patch up the holes.
So, I think we should bring this back to our next meeting on May 6th, because I know the EDC is meeting next, this Wednesday. So, that should probably be a discussion, because that project's...
Yeah, the lighting project's on their, on their agenda.
Right, so, and the plaques should be equally on there.
Yeah.
And then, we'll take a vote on the patching.
I think what Brendan is saying is that it's just the squares that were cut out, where the posts were going to be, that would be repaired, as opposed to, we would remove the, the entire flag.
Yeah.
And then, set the plaques.
Which, which you could do at a later date anyway, even if you do the patch now, you could come back with a new bid just for that work at a later date, rather than trying to scramble and, and do something that's gonna run into a lot of money.
Right, but they were originally gonna be put in, in tandem with the lights.
Correct.
And now, the lights aren't going in, so is that what we wanna do? I mean, that's something, or is there a better use for those, and that's something that needs to be considered?
Or, we can take our, take our time and think about that in the future and just patch them.
Yeah, that's what I mean, you just patch it and then, you know, do you want them in the sidewalk or not?
But I do feel that we need to do it sooner than later. I, I personally would love to see them in the downtown. I would not wanna see them over at Centennial Grove, not for any other reason, except for the number of out-of-towners who come to town during the summertime. It's a perfect place to show off who we are.
Sure.
And if we don't have the lights, we don't have the lights. But if we had the plaques, and they don't cause me to trip, I'm fine with them.
Yeah, and they are flush. I, I, I agree with Alva. I, I do wanna see the plaques in the downtown area. I think they tell a story.
Absolutely.
I think our, our, the public voted for the, the shipbuilding theme. I think we'll, we'll be moving forward with more beautification downtown and planters and, you know, hopefully trash receptacles, and they'll be more stylized. And I think that, you know, the, the whole point is that, you know, that, that is who we are. We, there were four thousand ships built here.
There are two sidewalks, so, you know, how do you wanna do it, you know?
Right.
Where do you wanna...
Well, yeah, and that, that's important too, 'cause...
Better or what, you know, that's what you need to think.
Right now, we're going to be, we're kind of locking horns with the contractor that started the job, because they're asking for X amount of money, and we don't think that that's the correct amount. We're not gonna get a good quote from them to do, remove the flags and put the plaques in, okay? It, it was fine if the project went fine, that was all part of the bid. But if you're asking it to be custom work, which it would be at this point, you're just not gonna get a good price.
Well, the smart thing is...
And my concern is, you're gonna come up on the summer season and you're gonna have people, I just think we need to patch, but...
The smart thing is to just patch it and then figure out what to do with the plaques along the way.
Yeah, I think they're too big to mount. I mean, the other idea was, you know, if we could've mounted them and, you know, sort of planted them in some of the pocket parks.
Yeah.
But there are a lot of them in that, you know, then people are starting to walk into those areas. And I think they're better set, but I think we want to, to be...
We could do a new plan through the EDC, and the Selectmen could approve it on exactly where the plaques are gonna go, 'cause now they can go on either side, right?
Right.
But in the meantime, and that's gonna take some time, in the meantime, get the sidewalk flush and, and filled for a relatively amount, small amount of money as compared to...
Definitely.
Okay. So, I will entertain a motion to approve hiring Mr. Haskell to patch the holes, the twenty-three flat, the twenty-three holes in the sidewalk.
So, moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And he can do that within the next few weeks, month.
Yeah, that's, that would be the, that would be the idea, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, just kinda to go back on Jody's comment about every treat or every six-month meeting or something, the invitation for the board, 'cause we don't get these invites, we just, they come to this meeting. So, for the board's knowledge, the invite to all of the Department Heads says, "The Board of Selectmen would like to have you report on the following important topics: Recent achievements, obstacles to current goals and objectives, expectations for the coming quarter, long-term goals on the horizon, concerns, recent grants, and an explanation of whether any particular grant will require the town to pick up..." of whether any particular grant will require the town to pick up any ongoing costs in the town's own operating budget when the grant is concluded. So, we do have kind of a criteria of what we're looking for, but I'm not sure that...
Right, that's what the Board laid out in the end of the last calendar year.
Yep.
We said that for the first time in January, and then I've repeated that here.
So, we do have kind of a format, but we don't always get that, so... Okay. Erin, do you want to join us next? Stay on that side of the room.
So, just a few things on the Board of Health list of updates. So, we're going to be installing Nalox boxes, the opioid rescue kits, with the help of the Harbor Master and DPW to put them outside at the ballfields, the Town Landing, I think Kenomo Point, I'm still waiting on that. But, so then we'll have these Nalox own distribution boxes outside and accessible for people. One Stop, Harm Reduction is going to be doing a presentation at the Senior Center this Friday at 11:00, it's open to the public, anyone can go. One Stop will be there, they're doing a little presentation on the services they offer in addition to Narcan education. I believe they're giving out Narcan, I have it in my office also, if anyone needs that, but it is open to the public. So, that's Friday at 11:00, Senior Center. We are doing a diaper drive with the library, so donations of diapers and wipes can be dropped off in the library or the Board of Health Office through the end of April, and then we'll deliver them to the open door. Last year, we collected like 600 diapers, I think, like packages of diapers in my office, so it was really, really successful. We have hired a shared services coordinator with, through the grant that we share with Hamilton, Wenham, and Rockport. Paul Vernucci's the shared services coordinator, he's full-time, primarily based in Hamilton, he's here on Tuesdays, and he's working on all of our, the deliverables in our work plan, including hiring a nurse, I believe they're interviewing for a shared public health nurse now, and then once this person's on board, we'll also be hiring a shared inspector. So, that will take some of the pressure off of the health agents, the Board of Health Administrator, our nurse, the nurses in the other communities to do some of the inspectional stuff, so we can focus on more programmatic things. Jessie Palm, our shared social worker, still doing her regular grief support groups. It's a bereavement group and caregiver's support group monthly. She's here, Mondays and Wednesdays are here in Essex, and she's working with the other community partners, including folks in Gloucester, even though Gloucester's not part of this grant, she's still brought in, or she's working with them on some of their youth substance use programming. Let's see, Board of Health, Police Department will be doing Drug Takeback Day, that's this Saturday at the Public Safety Building. Medications, prescription, over-the-counter pills, veterinary medications, we can take those, no questions asked, and the Police Department will take care of a safe disposal. They do have a Dropbox that's accessible 24/7 in the lobby of the Public Safety Building, but this is a national event, we participate every year, and it really is, it's pretty awesome. Let's see, we have, we were approved for a Public Health graduate student intern, and I interviewed Michaela Sullivan, she's a student at BU. Her focus is on epidemiology, but she's gonna be working with us, Fire Department, Police Department, Senior Center, on a Silver Alert Program for individuals who have memory issues or who are otherwise at risk of wandering off, so it could be kids or adults with special needs in addition to our senior population. Once she's done with that program, all, you know, setting up the program, the information goes to Regional Dispatch, it's kept confidential there, but will be accessible if somebody calls 911, or there's, you know, someone's missing. So, she starts, I believe, at the end of May, once the semester at BU is over for her. Let's see, we're seasonally busy with fieldwork, we have several ongoing enforcement issues, again, working with Police Department, Fire Department, Building Inspector on trying to get these long-term, very time-consuming enforcement issues resolved. Things move very slowly, but we're working on it. And finally, I just, I want to acknowledge the work that Jeff Thomas has done, our administrative clerk. He started about a year and a half ago, if you haven't met Jeff, he's absolutely wonderful. He's developed our entire online permitting system, streamlined every document that comes into our office, and all of these extra things that we're doing really is because of the work that Jeff has done to make things more efficient, so I just want to say that I'm really grateful to have him. That's it.
Thank you, Erin.
Thanks.
And I want to extend our gratitude to Jeff as well, he's been a huge asset to the Town Hall and the town in general. Chief Francis.
Good evening, all. So, regarding some of the recent achievements of the department, the department continues to work collaboratively with five area police departments, as well as assigned clinicians from Beth Israel Labor Behavior, excuse me, Leahy Behavioral Health, to provide mental health assistance when needed. As you know, it includes follow-up services, as well as co-response when appropriate. Some of the recent achievements in this area are assistance we've been able to provide to some of our residents that have long suffered from some form of addiction. Working with our clinicians, as well as the courts, it's kind of a collaboration with the courts, the clinicians, the police, fire, and what have you. Working with our clinicians, as well as the courts, we were able to provide much-needed services to some of the residents suffering from addiction and/or mental health concerns. And we're available 24 hours a day, as are, we can get ahold of our mental health clinicians if someone's having some sort of a situation and they need help. Also, back on August 11th, we had one of our embedded clinicians move on to a new opportunity, for a new opportunity. After months of searching, and we went, we interviewed people, and they were gonna take the position, and then they decided not to, we had two different people do that. After several months of searching for the replacement clinician, I'm happy to say the position has been filled, and she is currently being on-boarded. As most are aware, the department has been operating below contractual staffing numbers, filling vacancies with full-time, overtime, and reserve offices when available. Moving forward, the vacancies have been filled with the conditional appointments of Officer Megan Watson and Officer Victor Munoz. The two open positions have been filled contingent upon the offices completing a number of requirements, including the successful completion of the full-time MPTC Police Academy. Though we still have to backfill shifts with full-time, overtime, and reserve offices when available, there is light at the end of the tunnel. We expect Officer Watson, who is currently in her 11th week already, to graduate and be back to work after August 2nd. Officer Munoz will go into the academy in Linfield the following academy, which we're not sure as of right now, usually there's a month or so in between. If Megan gets out August 2nd, we're looking at September or October. On Saturday, April 13th, members of the Essex Police and Fire Departments, along with members of the Manchester Police and Fire Departments, as well as personnel from Northshore Regional 911 Center, participated in a joint training event at the Manchester Essex Regional High School. The training was part of an ongoing, the ongoing collaboration between all those involved to fulfill active shooter hostile event response training. It's known as ASHER. The requirements, and to continue the ongoing work by the public safety agencies of both towns, as well as the administration of the MERSD, Manchester Essex Regional School District. In the coming months, the planning of a training, of training events will continue, and may include such events as tabletop exercises, which is to be determined, as well as real-life emergency response drill from the initial report to Northshore Regional 911 and response by police, fire, all the way through to the conclusion of the events. In that situation, we will also have, there'll be school officials involved, there'll be, the DPW will be involved, because they'll be shutting down streets. We will make sure everybody knows it's a drill, but it's gonna go from point A right to the very end, to the after-action report, or the washout, as they call it. Excuse me. Obstacles to current goals and objectives, and you've heard this from me ad nauseam, so... As is the case with most departments at this time, there are two main obstacles to achieving departmental goals and objectives, staffing and funding. Staffing numbers continue to be the biggest obstacle felt by the department. With the number of officers at 13, one of which is in the academy, and three of them being part-time, each officer is having to take on more responsibilities, making it sometimes difficult to spend as much time on the street as we would like. We have also experienced an uptick in incidents requiring more in-depth investigations. Officers have been required to work more overtime just to ensure proper shift coverage, they are often being ordered in, and the potential for burnout has increased. Often, officers are having to work double shifts, which can only have a negative effect on productivity, but it not only, excuse me, have a negative effect on productivity, but it also diminishes the number of officers available for call-out. For instance, today, we have two officers that work the day shift, and they both work in the 4 to 12 shift. So, if we had to call on the next shift, the next shift's already there. We could call others, but that's not always the best situation. Of course, funding and staffing go hand in hand, with budgets being what they are, and the cost of most everything on the rise, being able to hire more full-time officers has not been an option. As much as I feel having more full-time officers would be immensely helpful, with the current hiring climate being what it is, even if the funding were available, we've learned to, we've learned that recruiting and retention has become very difficult. Prior to all of the changes, when we posted a job, we would have dozens apply. Today, you're lucky if you get five or six. Expectations for the coming quarter, we will continue to meet with the Manchester Essex Regional School District staff, as well as Essex and Manchester Public Safety staff to continue to step up our school response training, with the hopes of having more in-depth training this coming quarter. Another large task that must be accomplished in this is the preparation of our upcoming accreditation reassessment this fall. As is required every three years, we must be reassessed to ensure that we have remained in compliance with all of our standards. We've been in the program since mid, the mid-2000s, and this time around is expected to be more comprehensive, because we now have to abide by the new, brand-new sixth edition standards, which are now in effect. It should be noted that we're already being advised by the Mass Police Accreditation Commission that they're already working on the seventh edition, although this fall, when we're assessed, we'll be assessed on the sixth edition. The public safety agencies from Essex, Manchester, Gloucester, Rockport, and Ipswich recently participated in a Zoom meeting with personnel from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council and MEMA to discuss planning in response to a worst-case scenario weather event in our area. In the coming weeks, we will continue to meet and put together a tabletop exercise in which it is currently planned, which is currently planned for June 5th at the American Legion in Manchester. I will be receiving the formal invite from the MAPC within the next few days, which I will forward to those of you who should attend, they're gonna want someone from the Selectmen, the Town Administrator, maybe Town Accountant, Fire Department, all reps, for this tabletop exercise on June 5th, for those that can be available. All of this is made possible due to a grant received by the Town of Manchester, which may also provide funding for a public service announcement at the end with all involved communities. Some of the happenings at the department, as Erin had mentioned, this Saturday, from 10:00 to 2:00, we are doing our annual Drug Takeback Day at the Essex Public Safety Building. For those who don't know, it's 10:00 to 2:00, but usually, the officer is gone sometime after 1:00, because we have to pack up the drugs, we have to weigh the drugs, and we have to transport them to where the DEA takes them, we drop them off to the DEA. We are currently in the process of holding, we've started holding meetings and planning to once again have the Essex Police Department Car Show. I've got several people that are working with me to help get that off the ground. We're hoping to hold the event on Sunday, September 8th, and I will be asking to put this on the agenda for the upcoming Board of Selectmen meeting, and upcoming Board of Selectmen meeting to request permission to hold this event. In honor of Autism Awareness Month, officers of the department are participating in the Doug Flutie Foundation for Autism fundraiser. Organized by Officer Dan Morris, individuals are able to purchase the Essex Police Department Autism Awareness Patch to support the Flutie Foundation's Autism Awareness fundraiser. Officers, when working on a Friday, are required to wear that autism awareness patches, and may also wear it on any other day of the week in the month of May. We continue to work on recruitment and retention issues with police officers, both full-time and part-time, although the full-time, we're pretty well set, as needed to ensure adequate shift coverage without compromising standards and ethics and professionalism. We also continue to work with the school administrators, as well as various departments and agencies to ensure the safety of the children in our schools. This should include a uniform reunification program, as well as organized standard operating procedures, soup-to-nuts training exercises, which I've already spoke about, from the report of a hostile intruder to the response and debrief, which is a washout after the exercise. With safety in our school system being at the forefront of public safety concerns, we would be remiss if we didn't continuously work to give our children the best and safest learning environment possible within our district. Recent grants and explanation of whether any grant will require the town to pick up any operating costs upon completion of grant. This past fall, and now, Brendan facilitated a grant for $9,375 through MYHA for four more body cameras. You already knew about this, and obviously it didn't get brought up at the last meeting, because if you recall, I was out sick for this meeting, so, that's the reason I'm bringing it up now. Although, we are not, excuse me, the video transfer docking station for up to eight cameras as well came along with the, with applicable licensing. Above and beyond the grant was a license, the thing with these four, the four body cameras that we have now, they're backup units right now, if we have one goes down, we put that one into play. We have one extra one from the original grant, so, right now, we just, we're using those as backup when needed. Once those are put into play, if we end up with 18 police officers, those will have to be utilized, and we will have to pay for four licenses. Right now, it's at $243.75 apiece. Fortunately, we don't have to pay that right now, because we're just using them as backups. So, that would be a cost above and beyond if we have to put them into play. Once again, we received $10,000 grant from the Northshore Health Project, One Stop Program. This money may be used for mental health and opioid-related training, and follow-up responses, as well as related equipment, supplies, community-based training, and related overtime costs as well. There will be no extra cost coming from that grant. As a matter of fact, that grant actually allows us to send officers to much-needed mental health and opioid training, so that is actually helping us. And then we have the MED Project, which is our drug takeback stuff in our kiosk in the vestibule upstairs, in the Fire Department lobby. And we received $1,300 for that, and that pays for disposal of the drugs that we get, and it also pays for the hours that the officer works the drug takeback. And that's it.
Paul, you mentioned that there was an uptick in incidences, do you have any thoughts as to why that is? Are they a particular type that's surfacing more often, or is it just general?
I can't really get into it into too much depth, I'll just say that we've had...
More of some type of incident than others?
Non-residents, if you will, that have brought some issues with them.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief Francis, and thank you for doing a great job following the instructions on your invite. Teresa, do you want to join us?
I think I'm getting old, I can't sit cross-legged without my knee giving out. I did prepare according to the list that you asked for, so next time, I'll do it differently, but that's what I've got for today. So, thank you for having me. Recent achievements for the district since we met at the end of January, of course, the biggest one that everybody knows well about is that we did indeed pass a, an operating, and a capital, but operating is what everyone talks about, budget, that represented 2.94% growth. This was not the straight level services budget, this was slightly higher, seeing that the original level services budget was estimated to be about 3.4%. Some of the healthcare savings was used to offset a couple of the principal asks, and one of the community asks in staffing the elementary and middle school libraries. And so, with that $66,000 offset, that bumped the 2.7 that it would have been after the final healthcare number came in, up to 2.94. It did spark some additional conversation about the world language, K to 12, could we take the additional savings and put it toward that? But Superintendent Bowden has been very clear that some of these things that our community members are really interested in either bringing back or bringing forward, while they're wonderful, we do want to make sure that they... wonderful, we do want to make sure that things are done, not just do it now, but do it well. And so something like the elementary world language program will take some time to plan back into place. And so, this was a reasonable, responsible use of the savings, I believe, and again, the majority of our committee did vote to approve it. We hope that it passes at both town meetings. The same night, I will highlight something that kind of didn't get a lot of attention, because it was the same night, but we also voted on a field advertising proposal that was brought to us, that will yield some revenue if it happens. Basically, given all of the conversation about revenue, a community member in Manchester brought forth the idea that she would be willing to take on the work of bringing to the Manchester Town Meeting a change to their bylaw, because right now, there's a bylaw in place about signage, that you can't have signs beyond the advertising signs, except for where they're actually, where the store or, or thing they're advertising is actually located. So that would preclude the district from having advertising signs, for instance, on the field. And she brought forth a proposal, that if we would allow this to move forward and say that we would support it, that she would bring a citizen's petition to Manchester Town Meeting, and it is on their warrant, I believe it's Article twenty, to make that change, knowing that then, our athletic director would undertake the work and handling of allowing people to advertise through banners on the field. We're not talking about inside the building at this point, but on the field. So I bring, again, I, I highlight that because it's a issue of revenue potentially, we don't know how much, it's not necessarily going to solve all of our problems, but it's one step forward, something that people have brought forth and someone took initiative to do it. So we are hopeful that that moves forward as well. At the beginning of March, we had the Auditor's Report. Frank Ciretti of Powers &amp; Sullivan, which was recently acquired by Markham LLP, joined us, as he does each year. Just a brief summary of this, is that they issued a clean, unmodified opinion on the financial statement. Of note, he was very comfortable with the internal controls evidenced by the school committee treasurer, Glenn Bergavon, and I highlight that because he's new to us. Our longtime school committee treasurer, Charlie Lane, retired last year, and so last summer, Glenn Bergavon came on board, and so it was really nice to hear that coming from someone who knows our district so well and understands what's in place, that he felt confidence in Glenn's work so far, so we appreciated that. Also of note was that Frank pointed out that we have a fully funded OPEB discount rate at seven-point-five percent. That's due to forward-thinking and forward-planning on the part of our previous Director of Finance, Avi Erbus, and the work that he and Pam did together to bring that forward. Frank noted especially that, that few school districts or even municipalities have achieved a fully funded rate. So, that's good news. There was one additional note to the management letter this year. The special education tuition prepayment was made two days early before the start of the fiscal year, and that can't be, so, we will make sure that Michelle Cresta, who, in other news, has come fully on board, and we're very excited to have her as our new Director of Finance and Operations, make sure that that doesn't happen, and I'm sure that, that that won't be a problem moving forward, but it was an excellent, clean audit. And then he did a teach-in on how excess and deficiency funds are calculated for our committee, and we were able to ask questions. He showed us how, you know, where, how the numbers go from the balance sheet to the E and D consideration, and how they actually calculate those numbers. That was really helpful. It was a useful and generous use of his time, and I rather hope that we're able to add things like that moving forward, that each time he does that, maybe we could ask for him to just go into deep, def on something for us that we're having trouble understanding as a group, or explaining to others. Then, in additional news, Unit B negotiations. So, we have, with the Manchester Essex Teachers Association, in the past, we've only had one unit, Unit A, that represents all of the teachers. That's the only union that we have through the, have had through the district. We now have a Unit B for paraprofessionals. They've been waiting quite some time for this contract to be negotiated, and our negotiations team, the school committee reps are Kate Koch-Sunquist and Chris Reed, have been working all year on that, and I'm happy to report that we have a tentative agreement in place. It's being ratified by, it's in process of being ratified by MEETA, and then will be brought forth in an open meeting for full approval by the school committee. So I can't give you any details just yet, but I can tell you that in, in the climate that we're in right now, with contract negotiations with teachers, last time I stood here talking to you, Newton was in active strike, well, highly publicized. There are other districts around us having very difficult times with this. It was a respectful and, and a good give and take across the board. I was able to attend some of these, and, and in noting that, I will say, I'm really proud of the shift that our committee made to inviting silent observers. All those who are part of the formerly, former group, group formerly known as the Collaboration Group, were invited to participate in caucus and to silently observe when the whole group was in session for those, and I'm really proud of that increase in transparency. So, I'm looking forward to being able to send along all of the details to you. That's very good news. Additional recent achievements would be the conclusion of the principal search for Essex Elementary School. There's a whole process that, that is undertaken with this. It includes a screening committee, which is made up of parents, teachers, and students that meet with the superintendent, whose job it is to make these hiring decisions. They review the resumes, they winnow down, they go through the first round of interviews with, with these people, and winnow it down to a couple candidates, who then engage in a full day of walkthroughs with the superintendent. She gets to see how they engage with the students, the staff, the other administrators, and hold community focus groups as well, and staff focus groups. So some of you may have been there, they were open to all and well-publicized. So I'm happy to say that Kim Provost, who is currently the Dean of Students at the middle school, has been selected as the principal for Essex Elementary, and will begin for the next year. As Pam puts it, she has strong communication skills, collaborative leadership style, and a focus on student-centered learning, and experience teaching across elementary and middle school levels, positioning her to move EES forward. And I will add as a, as a, as my personal aside here, that she's well-positioned to help EES students in particular navigate the transition to middle school, because she's been there. So she understands the academic and the social expectations, and so she can really help us at Essex Elementary move forward with, with that transition, and bring our middle school students in really well-prepared. So I'm very excited for her on that. And then finally, in accomplishments, would be the EES Building Committee seating. We're tomorrow going to approve a group of people to be on, well, you'll hear me call the SBC, the School Building Committee, for the Essex Elementary School repair or renovation process through MSBA. So that process has been gone through. We had meet and greets with people who, who expressed interest that we didn't know or didn't have experience with this from a previous building committee. We have had a solid group of people interested in this, and I'm happy to say that we have a balanced group with some experience and some newcomers, lots of professional experience, solid credentials, and those will be announced in our meeting tomorrow night, excuse me, Wednesday, Wednesday at our meeting just before the Manchester Town Meeting. Obstacles to current goals and objectives. Our current goals are, and objectives are to get everything passed at both town meetings. So the, the main obstacles right now are just making sure that people understand what's before them. In Essex, I think that's a little bit less tricky right now. People generally understand what the concerns are here. The two, the two questions being asked in Manchester, it's a little more confusing, because there are actually four items that are school-related on the Manchester warrant. So you've got the operating budget and the feasibility, which is a much heavier lift there in terms of actual dollar value. But they also have the final, the final money for the field project being put forth, and then also that signs, that question of the signs. So that's our goal right now, is to make sure that both towns appropriate what is needed for this, and that we do our best to help people understand what's being asked. Expectations for the coming quarter, town meetings in the next few weeks are the, the top one, but also there are a lot of end-of-year responsibilities for school committee members and for the district generally. It's a lot of excitement, things like SCORE projects, the senior projects, going and seeing what those are, and letting them explain them to us, and supporting that process and program, graduation and all the attendant events, honoring all of the retirees that, that choose to move on from, from service, that'll be coming up. Reorganization of our own committee, starting in June. I've been serving as chair for two years, that's not likely to continue. So, we will have our reorganization meeting, our first meeting in June. And planning for any summer work that we do, at very least for our full-day meeting retreat. Retreat is a terrible word for it, we don't retreat to anywhere. We sit in the library and do our meeting, but that takes place at the beginning of Long-term goals on the horizon are pretty, obviously, the Essex Elementary School project, but also capitalizing on the stability of the committee. Both committee members who are up for reelection right now are running unopposed, so that means after a time of considerable transition, we are having a year where we can just move forward with the group as-is, unless someone gets written in and really knocks it out of the park. We're planning to move forward with the committee makeup as-is, which is actually exciting, because that leads us to, this long-term goal on the horizon, really engaging with Michelle Cresta. She comes with a new set of eyes, a different set of experiences. Her most recent experience has been in Marblehead School District, but she has years of experience also as a finance committee member, which I think we're all really going to benefit from, because she understands all of the pieces of the puzzle, and can really just take a new look at things, help us see what could be presented differently, help us see what we need to understand differently. So really engaging with her and diving in is, is a top priority and a long-term goal on the horizon as well. As far as concern, concerns, they're, they're minor. I, I mean, I have a little bit of a concern about some policy requests that we're dealing with, nothing that I need to really broadcast here, but there are, there's a lot to be done and wrapped up, that we need to kind of just make some decisions on, and so my concern is trying to conclude that work in a reasonable timeframe for us. And also allowing new people, like our new Essex Elementary Principal and Michelle, to get their feet under them, because we all want to get in. We've got these new people, and we want to see results right away, and we want to do this, but we need to give them a little bit of time to get their feet under them. So that's a concern that I have, that's my concern, as chair, not something the board has expressed concern with. As far as grants, I know in January, I told you about the DESI Arts and Cultural Vitality Index. One other grant that came around the same time, it was in December, was the High Dosage Math Tutoring Program. If you've paid attention to school committee meetings, you've probably heard us talk about, or heard Heather Leonard, Director of Curriculum Instruction, talk about this. So it's, it was a thirty-thousand-dollar grant awarded to provide math tutoring for students in grades four through eight, through DESI-identified partnerships, and they were allocated funds to support twenty-four students in grade four at EES, and thirty-two students in grade eight at the middle school. So it's very targeted, specific instruction for remediation of specific issues. And so that's a temporary grant, but it's not something we're necessarily expected to roll in. The hope is that that remediation takes place, and we're able to either incorporate the skills to provide it in district, or move forward without it. If we find that it's valuable enough to move forward, then that's a conversation that administrators would bring forward during the budget process next year. Self-signaling did provide an eighty-six-hundred-dollar award to support the STEAM showcase event, which, boy, I hope you took advantage of coming to. That was an incredible event. Kristi Hummely, our, the, the department chair for science at the high school, just did an incredible job building on last year. It's open to the entire community, and there were so many different presentations, it was just really important and powerful. So I, I hope you take advantage of it next year, but we're really grateful to self-signaling for their grant for that. It was an event grant, so we don't expect that to roll in. Spalding Ed Fund, as you know, it's been highly publicized, you may know, awarded about twenty-seven-thousand dollars in grants. These are materials and experiences, it's not program, new programming necessarily, but some things that are specific to Essex would be toolkits to help students at Essex Elementary build math, math fact fluency, brain bins to engage students at EES at the start of the school day, they helped the robotics team with their costs associated with their competition robot, so lots of really good stuff by Spalding Ed Fund, who does so much good, and we're glad they're back in action. And then finally, the DESE, that's Department of Education, Elementary and Secondary Education, Genocide Education Grant, which sounds different than it might be. So, it was a thirty-thousand-dollar grant awarded in April to support this year and next year, to acquire curriculum materials, support teacher professional development and student field trips and learning experiences, also some stipends for some more curriculum development, to meet the genocide education state law. Part of the state standards require genocide education, but this is done at age-appropriate levels throughout K through twelve. So, you know, in the middle school, it might be talking about looking at other people's perspectives and understanding them, that sort of thing. So it's not necessarily teaching about genocide, which is such a heavy word, certainly not down at the lowest levels, at the high school level it is. But as a reminder, this is state-mandated curriculum, and so, or state-mandated standards, excuse me, that have to be taught. So it's great that we had a, a nice grant to help get that up and running well within our district. So those are the things that you have asked. Do you have any other questions?
Does the board have questions?
I don't.
So Teresa, I have two questions. You mentioned revenue and the fields, bringing in revenue. So my recollection, I don't know where this shook out, I may have missed it, but the parent in Manchester that brought forward this idea, they wanted the revenue to go specifically to sports. Was that decided that that's how it?
No. So, the, the committee had a pretty good conversation about that, and here's the, the rub of it, is that we can decide to allow a thing, but we don't necessarily get to say where that money's going to go. So, our athletic director, Kami Molinari, who's doing a fantastic job, had quite recently given us a presentation on the status of the budget situation in the athletics department, and our fee situation. We voted on a fees increase this year as well. So we, we have to, at the, the bottom line was that we have to trust that these funds are going to get used on needs, not wants. We did not make a decision to direct where those funds would go. What we do know is that funds that come in through the athletic department, that's that much money that is not being asked for in the operating budget, generally speaking. So what we decided on in the end was to move forward, allow it to take place, see how much money we're talking about, and do a review after a year. Let's see, let's see, or after a season. Let's see what the season brings, see what we're talking about here. But within the conversation, it was definitely clear that committee members had some, some reservations about allowing this to, to be something that takes place only for the benefit of, of the athletics department in that way. But again, what our actual vote was, wasn't to move this forward, we had to vote to allow this to move forward, because our, we can't, we can only really approve this as a one-time thing with our own policies until that bylaw is changed. So it's already in process of being reviewed as part of our policy.
I just remember the school committee pushing back a little, saying, well, if the funds are coming in, we'd like to see that maybe in the arts or in drama. And I remember the school committee, you wanted to see it not necessarily just in sports. There were other members that wanted to see it in other areas, and I thought that the parent pushed back and said, if it's not athletics, we wouldn't be interested in moving forward.
So what, so we, I don't think, I, I just want to be clear that we didn't dictate that it would need to go to arts, or need to go to any specific thing. Okay. The parent did say that, yes, her willingness to move this forward, and that's why we had to be on that time crunch there, and get it in the same night as our budget discussion, was because there was a deadline for the citizen's petition. So yes, her move forward was saying that that would need to come in through the athletics department. But again, once money comes in through the athletics department, that's part of the athletics budget. Perhaps Kami's now not asking for that same amount of money in the additional, you know, in her next budget request.
So you're gonna use it as an offset, not necessarily other wants?
I don't know. That's the thing, I can't tell you. So there are some things that are needs, like replacing nets in the goals, there are, you know, things like that. There are actual needs that do take place there. It's not just paying coaches and that sort of thing. So, we don't really know as a committee, and as a committee, we had to take this vote saying, okay, we will support this, we're telling you, Kami, we trust you to, to utilize this well, and we're gonna review and see how we feel about it after the fact.
Okay. Okay. So it's not necessarily going to be a direct offset to revenue that you would see a reduce in the operating budget. And not that this is going to be big-ticket item numbers, but if revenue were to come in, it would be re-appropriated another way, not necessarily an offset.
That's what I'm saying, is I can't guarantee any of it. It could be used to offset fees, which just got raised. It could be used to offset materials costs. It could be used, you know, to offset, it could be used in a variety of ways that we did not dictate at this time.
So I think offsetting is fine, and my concern is when they say, "Well, we want this sport because after all, we're collecting this money for this sign."
There was no designation of what sport it would benefit, and that was not even a discussion. This is not a booster's club opportunity. This is the athletic director, who is a paid employee of MERSD, bringing in additional revenue, so it can't, it's not coming in as a, "This is going to go offset football" or lacrosse or anything specific like that. It's to the athletic department currently as revenue, but we don't know exactly how it's going to shake out.
But the, I mean, so my concern is the field, if you put signs on the field, on the fence around the field. Although it may be a fence around the field, it's still district property. And people, it's not just when they're at a sports event, they're going to see this sign if they're riding down the street. Or if they take pictures of their child, it's now something they take with them, out of towners. So, yeah, I just, it's, in my mind, it's not just for the athletic field and if...
I don't think, I think that was made pretty clear. I mean, graduation events happen on the athletic field. There were also some stipulations in there, or I should say, there were pieces in the proposal that did discuss taking them down in a timely fashion or making sure they're well-maintained so we don't end up with tattered things by the end of the year. You know, in the winter as they get beat up, we don't want, you know, tattered banners hanging around for graduation, that sort of thing. There's a little bit of a leap of faith. At the same time, we've been asked to explore sources of revenue. This is a source of revenue. So we're moving forward with it. We'll reevaluate after we go through a season and see what it brings in. I don't know if I personally agree with the numbers that were floated about, you know, in different conversations I heard about how much this could bring in, but we'll see, and from there, we'll make further decisions.
Great. And my second one is that you mentioned, when the auditor was in, they mentioned a prepayment for special education by two days. And my question on that is, is there any sort of a penalty or fine?
I don't believe there was a penalty or fine associated with that, but I could be wrong. My understanding was that it's just something you should not do, and it was noted in our management letter. So it was, the reason it was a problem is because it was the beginning of the fiscal year. So it was paid on June 29th, needed to be paid July 1st or after. With the Fourth of July holiday, with the extra town meetings we were doing, everything was a little up in the air and it got paid a little bit early. So I don't know that, I don't believe there was a fee. I'm pretty sure we covered that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was everything for me. Carla, do you want to join us?
Hi, everybody. Hi, colleagues. Carla Christensen, Library Director. I do have my list in the order that it was sent out, so, but I'm happy to be flexible and answer specific questions and, you know, I do what it takes. So starting off, looking at Q1, I completed my first 90 days as Library Director and things are going really well. So thanks to everyone in here and in Essex for a warm welcome. So looking back on sort of what we've done in the library space and what we've done in terms of circulation and getting materials in people's hands, you know, these are some of the metrics by which we measure ourselves. We, you know, report these metrics up to the Board of Library Commissioners who oversee us. So these things are really important. I'll always report these. I always keep track of them. If you don't want to hear them, that's fine. It's interesting to look at the trend sort of over time because we definitely see things that happen in the certain times of year. So for instance, in Q1, we had 56 events, most of them in person, a handful of virtual events with over 450 people participating. So things tend to go up, you know, as winter sort of comes to an end, even if it's not a hard winter. Still, people tend to come out a little bit more at the end of winter. So that's a, you know, that's great for a town this size, that we managed to do that in January, February, and March, with, which tend to be, those months tend to be a little bit grim. So I think that does two things. It makes people stay in the house and it makes people go, "Oh, my gosh, I have to get out of the house." So we particularly see a lot of families coming out, a lot of older people coming out. They need the stimulation of the library. They need that community feeling. They need that living room feeling. So great news on events. In terms of circulation, we had about 8,000 print materials circulate in that first quarter. That's about average. It always goes down in the winter as our digital circulation goes up, right? People at home, reading on their Kindles, you know, using Overdrive, using Libby, using their apps. So our digital circulation goes up to almost 1,800 for Q1, but then we'll start to see that shift, like through April. More print things going around because people are coming out. Digital circulation dips a little bit as people are more out and about. So it's interesting to watch these things. You know, I'm looking at year over year, quarter over quarter, and that actually brings me to our look at obstacles. And, you know, one of the things that I'm dealing with and that really all libraries and our consortium, the Merrimack Valley Library Consortium, as well as across the state of Massachusetts and really all of New England, are the costs of digital materials. I know I've talked about this before, and it's just going to remain an issue that, you know, to get, who's read The Women, the new Kristin Hannah book about Vietnam? Astounding, amazing book. There are 800 people waiting for it digitally right now, just in our consortium. You know, 100 of them could be Essex people. It's very hard to keep things, to keep enough copies of things because the digital edition of that book will be five times the cost of the print, even though there's no print. There's, you know, you're circulating zeros and ones, basically. But unfortunately, the way the publishers have negotiated, you know, royalties and fees, the costs of those digital materials are just incredibly high right now. As I've mentioned before, there's, you know, state legislation in virtually every New England state to help with this, but it just remains a concern, right? My job is to get materials in people's hands. And when I see that hundreds of people are waiting for materials, it's just really hard. So, you know, it's a balancing act, right? How much is the consortium doing to bring in more digital materials? How much am I doing, you know, out of my materials funds to bring in? It's always that balance, right? Can we help a little bit here? Is another community going to order more copies? You know, Essex residents benefit most when the Essex Library has purchased either digital or print materials. You know, you get first dibs, right? If you're in Essex, you get first dibs in Essex books. If you're in Manchester, you get first dibs on Manchester books. So it's always a balancing act of just making sure there's enough available in the consortium with, you know, enough in our community to meet our patrons' needs as well. So cost of digital books, it's just astounding, and they're limited, right? We tend to get metered access, or, which is, you know, the number of reads, or we get time access. You know, we keep our books in print longer than two years. Two years is about the most we can ever circulate a digital book. So it's just the accounting of it is just astounding. But we're, you know, I look at it every week. We're absolutely doing what we can. If any of you is on a list, I apologize. I'm doing what I can to get you that book quicker than a three-year wait, which seems crazy, but there's lots of, you know, hot books out there that people want to read. That's, I would consider that an obstacle to progress. You know, another thing that I know we hear all the time, and, you know, I'm going to talk about it all the time too, is really balancing the hours we're open, you know, with what the community asks for, you know, what people need. Right now, we're open 29 hours a week. In the summer, that shifts a little bit because we drop our Saturdays in July and August because people are generally out doing other things. Totally makes sense. But we are hearing a lot, and are about to document this with a large-scale survey, but hearing a lot about increased hours to meet a little bit later evening needs and then also a little bit of an increase on Saturday. Just things we're thinking about if we could get there budget-wise. You know, every hour takes staff people. One of my goals would also to not have staff be working alone when they're open or when we have open hours downstairs at the library. That does tend to be a best practice, is to not have staff working alone. So that, again, would be an increase in, you know, a certain amount of staff budget. So something for me to sort of see how it plays out this year, right, because I am only 90 days in. But to keep an eye on that over the year and kind of see what we can do for next budget round to possibly increase hours, possibly make sure staff are not ever working alone in the building when we're open to patrons. Moving on to expectations for the coming quarter, so it's already April 22nd, so we're into Q2 here. But we're starting really strong. I don't know if any of you were here last week, over the break. The Cape Ann Vrenel Pond team came with their snakes, singularly the most popular thing we ever do at the library. So Rick Roth came up here with his snakes. They're all accounted for. Don't worry. Well over 100, you know, families and children. It's just a beautiful thing to see. So that's a great start. It happens over the vacation week, so people who haven't, you know, done something else, we always try and have some special things over vacation week. And then next week, we're having Cheryl Fay, who's an actress and dramatist out of Amesbury. You've probably seen her. She did Ruth Bader Ginsburg. She does these sort of dramatic reenactments, and she's doing Queen Elizabeth II next week, and we're having a high tea. So that will be really fun. Many, many, a whole different demographic, as you can imagine, from snakes, but it's fun, right? That's what the library is for, is to really reach everyone in our community. So if you love Queen Elizabeth, definitely check that one out. A couple of other big things that always happen in the spring are the Pie Fest, which is our Friends of the Library big fundraiser. So that's Wednesday, May 1st, right up here. We'll be setting up starting at 11:00 and we'll be selling pie and I think cookies too always, and then we have coffee and tea until 4:00 PM. So that's the big Friends fundraiser. Definitely come by and get yourself some pie. And if you're interested in baking or just knowing more, look at our website, esxpl.org. It's in the events and on the new event slider as well. We'll be continuing our annual partnership with the kindergarten teachers in Essex. One of the most fun days of the year when the kindergarten classes come and learn about the library. You know, most of them are old hands, I'm happy to say, because kids come to the library starting at birth here, basically. But it's when kids officially get their first library card, when they come with their kindergarten class in May. So it's really fun. You can't go wrong, right, giving five-year-olds their first library card. It's really a beautiful thing. So those always happen in May, and May will also be hosting a local expert on fungi. So take a look at that. A teddy bear picnic here on a Saturday morning, a pet loss support group. We're starting with just an initial meeting, but if this is something that is really popular, we would be happy to continue. Our plant swap, which is a Friends of the Library event, and then some healthy eating programming to sort of round out the spring. We are well into planning for summer reading, which is a big deal. We partner with the schools to kind of coordinate a little bit around, you know, making sure kids are reading because they'll have goals for school as well. But we're deep into the planning for that. That will launch in June on the last day of school when we have our Root Beer Float sort of party to launch summer reading. Kids sign up for it. The theme this year is travel. So we can cover lots of things, including the Summer Olympics. That's always a big request to learn about the Olympics. So this will be, this will be a fun one this summer. We always have hundreds of kids involved. And it's really important, of course, from an education and literacy standpoint, right, to keep kids reading and invested over the summer. So that'll happen in June, and then the library's participating in the Essex Arts and Culture Fest, which is June, later in June, the Saturday after the Essex River Day. And so I am a part of the Arts and Cultural District sort of board. It's not an official board, but leadership group. I took that from Debbie when she retired, so I am now a part of that. And then the library would be participating in that festival as a, you know, arts and culture bearer within the community of Essex. And we'll be doing something about poetry, so stay tuned. I am cooking that up as we speak. Happy Poetry Month, actually, by the way. I should have, I should have read you all a poem. All right. So that is looking at Q1. Other things that are a little bit more long-term, that are happening sort of through Q1, but also through the summer and fall, will be continuing to work on our strategic plan. So we're required every year to have, to have an action plan or a complete five-year plan, kind of depending where we are in the cycle, and right now, we're in our updated five-year plan cycle. That is submitted in October to the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. The other big thing that happens over the summer is all of our statistical and financial reporting happens to the Board of Library Commissioners. So there's two large reports that we submit in July and August, so those will be available then. We work with our consortium and then also locally to put together, you know, every, every kind of measure of the library that you can think of, both, you know, circulation-wise, programmatically, you know, education-wise, about me as the director, to make sure we're meeting our certification goals, and, you know, to make sure we're spending appropriately on materials. They look at everything. So that's coming up. The timing is tough because those are July and August, and around here in Essex, what happens in July and August, we're all outside doing something on the river or something somewhere. So this will be my first, my first journey through those. And then one more thing that's happening is we're actually working on some display and shelving updates downstairs to really better utilize all available space. You know, it's a finite amount of space, so we have to be really smart about what we do. And so a couple of us have been looking at some potentially underused and sort of not as inspiring walls or corners and thinking about how we can better use that space. You know, that it meets the needs of our patrons, that what's on those shelves is meeting the needs of our patrons. So we're always having to look at that. So it's sort of a, both a space aesthetic, you know, best use of space issue as well as a community survey issue, right? Those things have to come together to make sure we're really giving our patrons what they want and what they need. One thing that I've noticed that's happened a lot, well, I've only been here for three months, but is that when people are new to town, what are the things you have to do? You know, you've got to find out how to get your stickers and how to get this and how to get that. And they come to Town Hall and they come in the Town Hall door and they talk to the town clerk and then they go, "Oh, that's the library." Or they come in the library and talk to us, and then we say, "Oh, and Town Clerk is right here, and this is where you get this and this and this." So it's actually so fun to meet people, right? The first thing they do is come to this beautiful building because they need to know how to figure everything out in Essex. So that's actually been really great to see as families move in, as people, you know, downsize their parents. You know, we sort of see it all and get to know those people right off the bat. So that's, you know, one of the, one of the things that makes me love to come to work every day in our library. Under concerns, you know, it's really the same sort of funding and staffing issue. You know, if there was really one thing I could do, it's to, it's to really make sure our hours are meeting the needs of our community and that we don't have staff people working alone. So that's, you know, something that I'll continue to look at. So that's, you know, something that I'll continue to look at. And the one thing to mention under number six, which is recent grants or awards, is that the library, all the FY 2024 aid has been dispersed. So we receive a small amount of state aid through the Mass Board of Library Commissioners every year. And so it gets voted upon generally in December and January. And the first dispersment comes in that sort of winter timeframe. And then the second dispersment comes, I got the notice, the week before school vacation. So they just split it into two payments. But all of the state aid has been dispersed. That funding is earmarked for the shelving and the sort of physical that I talked about, as well as technology upgrades. We're at our, most of our technology, our circulation and our patron-facing technology is at six or seven or more years. And our consortium recommends a six or seven-year replacement cycle. So that's something that, that money is earmarked for as it comes in. So that's my report. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Does the board have questions? So my only question, Carla, you mentioned best practices and having people working alone. My question is really around the concern. Is it that you're busy or that there's a safety concern?
You know, first, it's that we're busy, you know? And you don't want to keep people waiting necessarily so much. So we do for, you know, the other 27 hours a week, always have two people working. So no one has to wait, or if you have a question, you don't have to wait. But, but I would say the other 50% of it probably for me is just a safety issue. You know, if something happens and someone's there alone. You know, we have our alarm that goes directly to the police. We have officers who sort of swing by. They know when someone's working alone, and so they keep an eye on things, which we so appreciate and is absolutely wonderful. But for other libraries, it is, it is more of a safety issue than it is here. You know, we don't have two floors, you know? We don't have those kinds of things where you have to go somewhere and you're not, you know, accessible if public comes in. You know, we're really careful about locking the doors too. So, you know, you can only come in the main library door, you know, if it's after Town Hall hours, and the police do check the doors. So one of the officers who works nights comes by and tells me, you guys are so good, I never find your door unlocked. That's the point. But, so it's, you know, about 50% safety, I would say. And 50% just really, you know, making sure we're meeting the needs of our patrons. Yeah.
Great. And you said that of the 29 hours, 27 of them at this point, you have two people on. So it's really just two additional hours.
Two on Saturday when we have those. And then it's two hours on Wednesdays. So depending on what time of year it is, it's two or four hours.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Lisa, you've been patiently waiting, and I think you're our last report of the evening.
Hi. Sorry, I am not the impression I am allergiser. Not my friends this evening. So I will be pretty brief, because the planning board, as we know, isn't a budgetary kind of a group. What we've accomplished recently is getting seven articles on the warrant for further updates to the zoning bylaw. And we had a public hearing for those last week. And at the public hearing, the planning board, or after the public hearing, the planning board takes a vote on whether to support the articles or not at town meeting, which is something we reported on the floor. So all seven of our articles were unanimously supported by the board members who were in attendance that evening, which is, is nice to be able to say that on town meeting floor. One article is housekeeping stuff for the downtown district, just a dimensional adjustment. We're updating the purpose and intent of the whole zoning bylaw, which just makes it a stronger legal document when we outline why we have a bylaw and the qualities of Essex that we're trying to protect for residents and businesses. The third article that we have is really, it's, it's a, it's a formality. And it states that if a use is not permitted in the bylaw, then it's not allowed. So it's kind of stating the obvious, but it's an important thing to add to our bylaws just to make sure that we don't have a loophole. And then the last four articles are all about special permits, which are the process by which the planning board can regulate uses that could be problematic in town. So we have, the first article, updates the general regulations, which basically lays out what we're looking for in a special permit application, which also serves as the criteria we would use to evaluate a special permit. So again, that's another thing that makes the playing field clearer for applicants and for the planning board. So it's, it just makes our bylaw better, stronger and more user-friendly. And then the cell tower bylaw has been revised and refined, and that is in there as another article. We're introducing an article for a special permit for adult entertainment uses, which is kind of a technicality. But they're allowed by right in the state. So if we don't have something in our bylaw, then we don't have any ability to regulate them whatsoever. Not that anything is likely to come to Essex, but it's a wise thing to just include in our bylaw. And then finally, our last article proposes eight new special permit categories. And these are things that we have heard from residents, from planning board members, past planning board members, et cetera, as types of uses that really should have a little bit more control than just being a by right use. So that's what we've got. The goals and objectives of the planning board right now are that we're going to be looking to at fall town meeting, introduce residential district. So over the next couple of months, we're going to try and have a very public presence and hold a lot of forums, try to do a lot of public outreach and gather opinions, suggestions and a lot of feedback from residents and businesses. So I just suggest that everyone, please stay tuned for that and contribute as much as you would like to. That's our sort of long-term goals. We don't have any grants, because no one grants planning boards anything. Well, actually, MAPC grant is over now, so we're working on our own with Val. Val Masard, who is a new part-time town planner, and she's great. She has a lot of planning experience. She's made some really good suggestions so far. And other than that, the progress we've been making is mainly due to Teresa and all her organizational skills and efforts in the planning board office. It's starting to really come together. And I think we're going to have a lot stronger position as far as just being well-documented, well-organized and prepared for upgrading our bylaw mainly. So anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Lisa. Does the board have questions? No? Okay. Well, that will conclude. Is there any other department heads that I'm missing? No. So that concludes our department head quarterly meeting. I appreciate everyone's time and report outs. Have a good evening.
I continue with the report.
Thank you.
So next they have the town meeting motions and the update on that. There's not a lot to say here, because we put all the names in the way that the board wanted last time. And I checked with other boards and committees. The one question I have is on the school budget article.
The budget or the feasibility?
The feasibility. I did ask Annie whether she wanted to read it, and she suggested that perhaps the chair read it. Teresa, that was her suggestion.
I think that you should read it. You, what do you think? Just because you can answer questions on the fly, you've been part of a school building committee.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. So I'll put Alva in for that. And I can mention that the amount here, $336,000, I got the exact amount today from the business manager of the school. It's $336,050, rounded up from $48.90.
You said Article 15?
Oh, this one.
13. You know, I gave you an updated monetary summary, which keeps getting updated right up until the date of town meeting. Really, the only open question there is the amount of money we're going to be doing for the security and camera devices, Article 23, as we discussed earlier in the meeting. And that's it, unless there are any questions.
No questions.
Next is, we did make a site visit to the owner unknown parcel, which was something that the chairman had planned with me when this came up in the past. And we also went with Jody Harris, the chairman of the Economic Development Committee. We were able to access this owner unknown parcel from a budding property with permission of the owner. In fact, that landowner actually escorted us through his property out to this particular property. What really struck us is that, as you could see from the topographic map, when you walk out there, the land undulates quite a bit. In some places, there are actually steep drop-offs. And it was obviously shallow to bedrock. So I think it's important that we continue to look at the research on ownership. But does it look like a parcel that's easy to develop? No, it doesn't. Ruth, I don't know if you had any other.
Is it landlocked?
There is access from 128 through other parcels that the town owns.
Yeah.
And there's also access on the road that the, that goes up to the state fire tower, which is an existing road. That road meanders out across this property and back onto.
Okay, okay. So there is.
There may be, yeah. So at this point, I'm going to try to get an update from Brian Barby. I reached out to him, but I didn't hear back on the status of his research.
And do you know how many, I forgot how many acres this was.
99 acres.
99 acres? Well, I bet somebody could develop it.
Oh, yeah. They're pretty clever.
That's it for the report.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of $871,918.18.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the selectmen's March 22nd, March 29th, April 5th and April 10th open meetings.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will entertain a motion to vote to appoint Ian Dunn as the town clerk as of April 22nd, 2024 through June 30th, 2024. A subsequent vote was taken.
Will be taken.
Oh, will be taken in June for a three-year term commencing July 1st, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you have a motion for the building permit?
So we received a request from the family of Nancy Lemke to remove her from the deed down at Canoma Point, and that is necessary. So I will entertain a motion to consider a request from Nancy Lemke, Elizabeth Deveries and J.C. Deveries to remove Nancy Lemke from the lease of 17 Middle Road, MAP 108, Lot 55, which is currently leased by Nancy Lemke, Elizabeth Deveries and J.C. Deveries.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I will entertain a motion to ratify the board's approval of a line item transfer in the amount of $3,400 from Shellfish Vehicle Fuel to Shellfish Vehicle Maintenance. And we already had the discussion about the rest of it.
Well, this would be whether you want to potentially modify that, that vote to include $1,000 for frame welding. Again, we're going to look at.
New to us.
Yeah. I don't know what you want to do, but if you're going to.
Well, it's just going to roll back to the general fund.
Right. So I would say that if you end up going that way, you're going to need the extra $1,000. If you don't, then all of it, no matter whether it's $3,400 or $4,400, will roll back.
Okay. So we'll change the amount to $4,400.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I will entertain a motion to vote to approve a request from the Board of Public Works to transfer a total of $19,067.2 from various cemetery accounts for their fiscal year 2025 budget.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will entertain a motion to sign the final boat storage license pertaining to 103 Canoma Point Road with the Essex Bay Sailing Club.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we received.
Has that been passed around? It's all set, okay.
We received an online building permit to do a project at 9 Middle Road. And when something happens on leased property at Canoma Point, the Canoma Point Commissioners have to sign up. So it goes to the town administrator for approval. And for simple building permits with no real structural changes, he can approve those. This one, however, is a change, because what they're doing is adding two dormers. We did get a drawing of what that looks like. So the current house sits with one dormer in the middle of the roof line. They're going to be adding, or their request is to add two dormers on either side, which will change the roof line as well as need to re-roof the house. I did drive out there. Actually, when we did the site visit, I went and looked at the house. And the, and you can see from the drawings that it doesn't actually change the height of the roof at all, and it's not going to block any view. Not that that's relevant with building permits, but I don't think you're going to get any pushback from any of the surrounding neighbors. Are there any questions?
But will it add footage to the house, square footage to the?
No, because it's not, you can't walk on it, it's just dormer. So it's just going to add two windows for a view.
So they're not full height? They're not, you can't walk in that little space?
You could, but it's not going to change. A dormer just increases headspace, not foot space.
The floor is already there.
Right.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That was in.
Yeah, but I thought when you did add a dormer, it would increase square footage, because it means that you're now having the headspace where you didn't before.
Usable square footage, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that does go through the assessor's office. So if there is something that would affect the value, that will be picked up separately.
Is there a?
Yeah, did you see, was this drawing?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions before I take a motion on that? Okay. I will, I, Ruth R. Perrine, move to approve a building permit to perform the following work at 9 Middle Road, MAP 108, Lot 58. Install two dormers, subject to all terms and conditions of the land lease for said premises, including but not limited to Articles 5 and 9.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So can I just ask, when you say that it goes through the assessor's office, does it go through the assessor's office when the work is done? Does it go the next time the town gets?
They periodically assess it and they assign a percentage complete. And when it gets to 100%, then they change the value. And they look back, they do a look back at January 1st every year. So there could be a lag.
And Alva, that building permit goes through their office in conjunction with going to the building inspector. So Patty keeps a list of every property that's pulled a building permit so that she can periodically review it. Okay. So we received an email in our packets from Robin Cantor. And her request is, the Chabaco Lake and Watershed Association was wondering about the possibility of hosting a solstice event at Centennial Grove. I understand from Jody Harris that the pavilion will not be ready, but we were thinking of more gathering of lawn chairs somewhere on the grassy area with a small cookout, no music or anything like that. We've been having a few community building events this year to boost our membership, and we are paying for some lake studies. The solstice is June 20th, and we were thinking 5:00 to 8:00 PM. Do you think it may be possible? So that's come before us on the agenda with a question of, consider a request from the Chabaco Lake Watershed Association to rent Centennial Grove on June 20th, 2024 from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. The event would involve only the picnic Grove area and not the pavilion or the cottage.
So moved.
Gee, well, I think we.
It's here as a conceptual discussion. And then if you want to move forward, they would put in a formal application.
Oh, okay.
Because this is another kind of new thing where the Grove isn't done yet, but somebody wants to rent it.
Yeah. So.
Do we have a value?
I believe it's $175 if it's a, if it's a resident who takes out the rental papers.
Yeah.
Because it's not, because it's a weekday.
Right.
My question would be, is the price? And then also, what's the number of people they're hoping? I mean, because it is, where there is construction still going on, you know.
It would have to be on that knoll, you know, up above the beach and over toward the basketball court. Really, that's all we've got open right now, but there's still enough area there.
Is it before the camp starts? It must be, right?
Yes, just before.
Just before. So in, like both, you know, the concerns.
20th, not 24th.
20th, June 20th.
I don't have a problem with it. I don't have a problem with it.
The key is they're going to be bringing people in from beyond Essex, so they have to rent it and get the placard.
And that's why I'm asking, how? I mean, are we talking just the people in the Essex Hamilton area that are part of our local watershed or are they looking?
And, and their guests, I guess. Whoever wants to be.
I imagine that would be the bulk of them.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if they get 50 people, I'd be surprised.
Right. And right now you cannot be at the Grove. You can't even go there unless you're renting it, if you're not a resident.
It's past the beach usage period, you know, time of day. It's five o'clock, so you know, I mean, it's starting to thin out, if not thinned out. So I don't really see an issue with it.
We've been relatively strict about not renting out. You know, obviously the pavilion's under construction. We have, we have made sure that residents can rent the cottage. We even extended the offer about the rental of the cottage to an outside family that's in a whole nother state. I think this is a resident that volunteers for our community. I see no problem with this. I just would want to make sure that if they're going to have entertainment, which they say in their email that they don't intend to do music, but, or alcohol, that they fill out the proper applications and I have no problem with it. So I will entertain a motion to approve the request with proper application or I guess we won't.
Sign it outside of a meeting as long as it comports with what she said.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the request to the Chabaco Lake Watershed Association to rent Centennial Grove Grassy Knoll on June 20th, 2024 from 5:00 to 8:00 PM and provide them a parking pass, provided that the proper application and fee is collected and we will sign this outside of a meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody can go there though. I mean, any resident.
Yeah, because it's not closed to just because it's an apartment.
Yeah, and I guess that that's my only question is do we put a stipulation in, in regards to making sure like that it's safe with the building, you know, because the bathrooms are going to be, still be in work on at that time and.
The bathrooms won't even be started.
They won't even be.
No, and the pavilion itself is actually segregated off by construction fencing. So I mean.
It should be okay.
Will there be portable toilets there then? Will they be installed by then?
They will be up there, but just two of them. So I, you know.
Yeah. So, yep. Are they there now? Yeah. Okay. I thought I saw something on that.
Sorry, I'm right by.
Yeah, you sent something out on that, didn't you?
I don't know about that, but I know I ordered it.
Okay.
So next is the change orders that are on the full sheet of paper.
And I'm going to recommend that you only consider change orders two and four this evening. You already approved number one at a past meeting. Okay? If you recall that.
Yep.
Two and, four is already done because they had to do it to keep working and not, not stop the job. It has to do with locating control panels a certain distance away from other electronics and, and it, by the time they laid it all out in the field, they had to make a change from the plans. Two is, is, is recommended and it's going to come up soon. You have to do it. I think this is, if someone pulls the safety shower, it actually disables electrical devices around in that surrounding area and it's a code requirement. Three and five are something that the, it's not critical path. There's, at, by, by May 6th, the engineer will give a full breakdown on why these are potentially required and what's behind them. So tonight I'm only asking you to consider items two and four. And the engineer so far has told me he thinks there might only be one other change order in the project and the total contingency that was put aside was just over 102,000. We're not anywhere near that. But are, is the board willing to approve two and four tonight?
I will entertain a motion to approve change orders two and four for the ongoing water filtration plant renovation project.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is executive session. Do you want to talk about that?
So on a quarterly basis, I go over with the chair of the board, various sets of executive session minutes that have not been released and review whether the, the purpose for which the executive session was convened has been completed. And then we come up with a, with a set of minutes that are possible. Then I go over those with town council to be sure that there aren't longer term protections. And so in this case, we came up with four different sets of executive session minutes that are ready for release and that takes a vote of the Board of Selectmen.
So I will, are there any questions about that?
No, we read through them all.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to vote to release the minutes from past executive session on 8/10/2020, 10/3/2022, 10/24/2022 and 1/23/2023.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you have anything that wasn't anticipated? No? Okay.
We need to do anything with the Community Preservation Act?
No, that's just showing you what that is likely to look like.
Okay. Couple of licensing items. So first we have a transient vendor's license. I will entertain a motion to approve the license for Jane Barrett, JB Blooms, 169 Eastern Ave.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.